I'd like to call the Menor City Council Regular Meeting of Tuesday, August 15, 2017, to order. The invocation will be given this evening by Councilman Kirchner.
Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. Help us to use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in wisdom with a continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community we represent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Julie, please call the roll. Mr. Kirchner?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Landig?
Here.
Mr. Marn?
Here.
Mr. Blake?
Here.
Mr. Donovan?
Here.
Mrs. Dowling?
Here.
Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of July 5, 2017?
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll. Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling? Yes. Public hearing. The first public hearing we have is for ordinance number 17-0-70, and this public hearing is being held pursuant to notice duly published and posted according to law. Julie?
An ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the City of Menor 2006 as amended and the official zoning map by rezoning of approximately .18 of an acre from OV Old Village District Residential to OV Old Village District Commercial at 7461 Presley Avenue.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mayor President. Mr. Traub, please.
Thank you. Mr. Philippiac, members of council, you have a zoning history which is rather elaborate or lengthy relative to this project and also a brief description of the project. I'm going to approach the podium and share two overhead illustrations that I think will tell the story of what's being proposed. Just a moment, please. helpful. The area highlighted in black with the crosshatching is the site to be rezoned. The applicant proposes to convert that, as you can see, was initially depicted as a single-family residential lot. Because of the, if you will, the popularity of the Center Street School, there's a need for additional parking to be associated with that project, and their proposal is to, as a result of the rezoning, it would be permitted to change that from a residential lot to be allowed for parking. We've rezoned, as council is aware, by development plan, and depicted on here is the lot right here, and you can see the conversion of that, again, from a residential lot to a parking lot. It will join an existing parking lot and will be fenced from an adjoining residential property to be developed in the future. Thank you.
Did the applicant want to make any comments this evening? No? Okay. Bring on, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Okay. Council is in receipt of all correspondence received pertaining to this matter. This public hearing is adjourned. The next public hearing is for ordinance number 17-0-71, and this public hearing is being held pursuant to notice duly published and posted according to law. Mr. — Julie, please repeat.
An ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the City of Menor 2006 as amended and the official zoning map by rezoning 1.92 acres from R2 Single Family Residential District to B2 General Business District at 8040 Broadmoor Road and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Mr. Traub, please.
Thank you. Members of council, I'll approach the podium again with photographs that I believe will help tell the story before us. Thank you. As you'll note from the staff report, the request is to rezone approximately two acres from R2 Single Family Residential to B2 General Business. This is on the southwest corner of Broadmoor and Menor Avenue. See the parcel depicted, outlined in black, to the north, as it were, is commercial property that fronts on the south side of Menor Avenue. To the south and to the east, we see an existing single-family residential development pattern. We rezoned, as council is aware and as I previously mentioned, by development plan. The applicant has proposed the following development. It's proposed to be a single-tenant, I'm sorry, a multi-tenant building, approximately 12,000 square feet, and would be occupied by a chiropractic and physical therapy business. As a part of the planning commission's review, one of the questions was relative to traffic impact, and the determination was made during deliberation that there was not significant traffic generated as a result of this project to warrant a traffic impact study. One of the, as a result of the investigation of the site, and I'll go back to the aerial, it was noted that an adjacent parcel, which is actually, if you will, enjoys split zoning, B2 in the front, is zoned R2 Single Family Residential and would be, if you will, surrounded on three sides by commercial development. The planning commission had debated whether this should be included in the rezoning. My planning commission report is in error because it indicates, as one of the conditions, that, in fact, they did recommend that that be included, they did not, but the administration recommends that this property in question be included. You'll note from this drawing and other materials that are included in your packet that this property does not have frontage on Broadmoor, so the difficulty in terms of developing it for residential development would be problematic because, again, no frontage. As a commercial development, it could be joined with several of the properties that front on Menor Avenue or this property that will be likely before the voters in November to rezone. Members of council, are there any questions?
I'd like to make a clarification for council. This other parcel that's just been brought up is not part of the rezoning tonight, and if that owner wants to bring it up for rezoning at some point in time in the future, that person can. I reviewed a plan that was adopted in 1987 when that commercial building was put in, and that's when that was split off, and it has stayed that way since then. And although maybe there's some thought to that, you know, at some point in time in the future, being rezoned, it is not part of what you have tonight. What you have tonight has been published in the newspaper, the permanent parcel number identified, and that's what we're here for tonight. In addition, as Mr. Traub has pointed out, we rezone according to development plans, and one at this point in time does not exist for this parcel. So it's certainly a relevant discussion, but it is not part of what you're going to do tonight. So I just wanted to make that clear in this public hearing so that, you know, later on when you vote on it, if it's not discussed again, it's stated right now, and anybody that had any question about it has their answer now. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Did the applicant want to make any comments this evening? Please state your name and addresses for the clerk.
I'm Tim Moore, co-owner of Line Chiropractic. State an address.
Please.
My resident address?
Resident.
Sorry.
Yeah, where do you live?
I live in St. John's Bluff, in Willoughby.
Okay.
Mark Multry, Gem Construction. I live in the City of Menor on Ellington Place.
Justin Mark. I'm the co-owner with Tim, and I live in Pepper Pike.
So I think we would just like to offer ourselves to the council, if you had any questions with regard to the site development itself and/or the construction of the building. And one of the questions that I had is with regard to the property that is not of topic this evening is, is that at any point going to become something that you will require to be rezoned due to the rezoning of our property?
Well, you know, I think it's premature to really go into that. The owner of that property is here, though, that handsome man with the blue tie in the back. Maybe when you're done here, you guys can get together and talk about your respective properties, but we're not doing anything about rezoning his property tonight, period.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I mean, I just, do you have any questions in regards to what the business is or is going to be?
We can address those in the other section.
Okay.
Anyone? Anyone good?
Great.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this rezoning? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Good evening, everyone. You're missing a good concert, I assume.
We hear it.
You can hear it? We'll open a window. My name is Matt Crissaro, and I reside near the property. I also own the office building across the street, the Menor 306 Building. Our office building's been there for quite some time. I've worked in the building for 30 years and lived in the neighborhood just adjacent to 306 for the last 22 years. So I put together a few notes so that I don't just bounce around here a little bit. So while I'm in favor of growth in the city, I am very concerned that the traffic flow from the proposed project would make this section of Route 306 even more dangerous and more congested. My understanding is that the intersection of State Routes 306 and Menor Avenue, Route 20, is probably the second-most traveled intersection in Lake County. I'm not positive of that statistic, but I've heard that several times in the past. I believe, but I don't know all the details of this as well, that prior attempts to rezone this proposed parcel have not been allowed. I don't have any details about that. Perhaps if that happened, it was because of the enormous traffic load on Route 306 or because of the close proximity to 20. But once again, I don't have details of that. I have received the copy of the Trip Generation Report dated July 6, 2017, that was written by Polaris Engineering and Surveying of Willoughby Hills. The result was apparently written to show that the proposed 12,000-square-foot multi-tenant building would not bring significant traffic to this intersection. Polaris used the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Guide as its source of data. I'm not an expert on that book. I've never seen it. Tried to look up a little information to see what type of classifications are in there. The medical and dental office was under offices. They did have things medical for clinics and things like that. I don't know. I wasn't able to access the numbers to see if the numbers generated by that size building would be more significant or not. However, when I was contemplating whether I was going to come to the meeting or if this would be a good thing or bad thing, as I am pro-development and pro-Menor, I was thinking of the last few times that I've been to a medical or dental office. Typically, when I go to the doctor, it is about an hour. If it's a physical, maybe a little longer. Dental office, even for a cleaning, is probably 45 minutes. But the last few times that I took one of my children to the chiropractor, it was about 10, 15 minutes by the time I got in and out of the door. So I don't know if I have tremendous confidence in the numbers calculated under medical and dental. Polaris did note there that medical-dental office was what they had to work with because there's nothing for chiropractic or therapy office. So this report shows estimated two-way traffic volume of roughly 434 vehicles per weekday. I don't know if that's 432 in and then obviously 432 out, or if that's total. It says two-way traffic. I don't know what that means. Including Saturday number, that would be 2,278 that they're assuming. I don't know, once again, if that is total in and out or if that would be each way. Even though my personal feeling is that either way, it's too much new localized traffic for this area, what concerns me even more is that with as many as 14 different treatment rooms, including doctors' offices, therapy, rehabs, and a pool area, and just the main unit exclusive of the other three additional units, I am very concerned that the actual traffic flow numbers may be much higher. If treatment times are, as I mentioned, in the 15- to 20-minute range, that could be three or four patients per room per hour. From my conversation with City's Director of Development, Ron Traub, I was told that the proposed entrance would allow unrestricted left and right turns. That concerns me as well. This entrance, I don't know if the camera's above me here, but I can, Ron, maybe I can borrow your satellite image. The place where it looks like the driveway would be coming in and out is just to the north. Thank you. All right. I don't know. It's kind of small. But so anyway, this is where our office is. We have two entrances to our building. One is right here off of 306, and that one's, cars are able to get in from time to time heading southbound, but from a northbound, it's very difficult because you have to cut across two lanes of traffic. We do have another entrance and exit, which is the main supply to this parking lot, which is off the south side of our property and exits onto Broadmoor Circle, maybe about 40 to 50 foot from 306. From what I can tell, the proposed area is right in here, and it looks like the driveway for entrance and exit is just north of Broadmoor Circle. So I got a couple things on that. As my office actually faces Route 306, I have a firsthand view of the traffic there, and I can tell you that we do have quite a few cars through there. I have witnessed many accidents, probably two more to count, too many to count, between motorists pulling out of Long John Silver's, the multi-tenant building across the street that houses Kohar's Pizzeria and Tupperlows Windows, and worst of all, probably the Shell gas station where people try to turn southbound across three lanes and merge with southbound traffic, which is always very exciting to watch from my conference room, and not always with good results. This gets much worse during the winter months, well, when driving conditions are much more dangerous. Traffic at this intersection becomes even worse during the holiday shopping months of late November through early January. This would be the fourth commercial driveway to the south of Menor Avenue in close proximity to Menor Avenue. My own building has two entrances, which I've already mentioned. Coming out the back of the driveway onto Broadmoor Circle and then trying to go on 306, which is what, we don't have a lot of turnover in our office, it's an office building. Other than my staff and the different staffs, there's not a lot of guests that come and go during the day. But our tenants would certainly tell you that trying to make a southbound turn, a left turn, off of Broadmoor Circle at almost any time in the morning or after work is very, very difficult. When you do get past, let's see, where was I? When you get past the northbound traffic, that if it stops hard to see past or if it's moving, you have to get across that. You're then merging southbound with cars that have crested over Menor Avenue and are usually headed by that point at 35 miles an hour, which I believe is the posted speed limit there. Adding a new driveway across from Broadmoor Circle but a little to the north would make negotiating this term much more dangerous, I feel, as well as make it more dangerous for motorists going southbound and northbound on Route 306. As cars, as for cars leaving the proposed building, anyone turning right in front of southbound traffic will slow the flow of southbound traffic. Even more difficult will be cars leaving this building attempting to turn left to head north on Route 306. This area of northbound traffic splits from one lane to three lanes at the intersection. I'm not convinced that the proposed development is in the best interest of Menor residents, motorists, or pedestrians traveling this already very busy stretch of Route 306. I ask Menor City Council to review this proposal very carefully. For some of you, this may be the first time you've seen or been presented with a proposal. I would also ask that City Council decide whether ordering a more in-depth traffic study would be a wise decision before moving forward with this project. I thank you all for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wanted to speak in opposition? Okay. Did the applicant want to respond to? Please come forward.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify as far as what our office is. I know he mentioned that chiropractic is a 15-minute in and out. We are about 80, 85% of our patient load, which is about 250 to 260 a week right now is all, is entirely like a rehab patient. They're there, what, an hour and a half to two hours?
Sixty or ninety minutes.
Yeah. So it's not, it's not an in and out. So it'll be, you know, and we have maybe four every half an hour that are coming. So that should reduce the amount that he's thinking as far as the in and out of our office, and our office is open until 7:00, so the staff and the people that are there, you know, as far as we come, you know, the morning time, but the evening time, you know, they won't be leaving until 7:00 o'clock, which should slow the traffic down. I know our driveway is being on the opposite side of where the current resident driveway is, a little bit further away from the intersection, which I would think would allow a lot, a little bit more space as far as the traffic there.
Well, the only thing I would like to add to that is that I think, you know, the City of Menor and its traffic patterns throughout the city, you know, this site development is probably not any different than some other areas of the City of Menor, and I think the habit of individuals that are visiting any location understand traffic flow and, you know, as far as safety concerns, take that into account when visiting locations. So, I mean, I certainly understand the point of view, and I think that if required, we would be more than happy to provide any further traffic flow information along with our final summits. I think that would be fine.
One further statement is that our office is currently located right down the street from there at, you know, with the Colonial Plaza. So I'd say at least half of our patient load comes right through that area currently anyway. If that makes a difference.
Council is in receipt of all correspondence received pertaining to this matter. This public hearing is adjourned. The next public hearing we have is being held pursuant to notice duly published and posted according to law in its ordinance number 17-0-73.
An ordinance authorizing the issuance of a conditional use permit to allow a drive-through facility at 9490 Diamond Center Drive in the B2 General Business District by Taco Bell of America LLC and Trast Towers LLC.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mayor President, and I will ask Mr. Traub to address this directly, but I will make a couple of opening comments because council did receive earlier today a updated version of the site plan, which predominantly attempts to address the major concerns with this development on Diamond Center, which were traffic-related, and in particular egress as it relates to those making the left turn onto Diamond Center Drive. So I've had an opportunity to review that and discuss that with members of council. And Mr. Traub, if you could introduce that as well as the item for council's benefit, I would simply point out that in the administration's review of this, this is actually superior to any product we've seen up to this point with respect to the egress plan. In particular, it closes off the parking lot entry point that is closest to the intersection of Diamond Center and Emerald Court. Ron, can you get that up on the board, please? Which essentially forces Uh, which essentially forces those who are attempting to leave that parking facility to travel to the parking lot entry point to the south of that spot, um, allowing for ample opportunity for queuing efforts as, uh, persons line up to make that left turn out of the parking area onto Diamond Center.
Mr. Philippiac's, uh, comments, uh, at the, uh, at the end were pertaining to, uh, this area down, uh, down here. As you can see, the, from the, uh, underlining aerial photograph, that area provided for a, uh, free passage between this parking lot and the adjacent, uh, business to the, to the east. Under this proposal, they're proposing to, to close that off so the traffic, uh, through the drive-through and Taco Bell wouldn't have a, uh, a straight shot, uh, as it were, through the parking lot and create a, uh, queuing difficulty at the traffic light located here. Instead, they would have the opportunity to either turn, uh, south here and, uh...
Mr. Trab?
Yes?
Could you speak? We can't, have a hard time hearing you.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, uh, if you will hug the, uh, front of the building, the other opportunity would be to use the, the northern driveline, but you'll note that a, uh, island has been proposed here, again, that would, uh, direct traffic to the, uh, to the south, and, uh, if you will, force them to, uh, enter this, uh, drive area, uh, further to the south and create, uh, additional queuing. I would, uh, I would note, as, uh, Mr. Philippiac previously indicated, and as you can see on the drawing, um, the, uh, and the, uh, the exhibits indicate, uh, the current, uh, access to this site is an unrestricted, uh, uh, right-in, right-out, um, and the, uh, complications there for those of you that, uh, utilize that stretch of road, it, it's currently, uh, a poor situation, and, uh, the proposed improvements here, uh, would, uh, allow traffic simply to, uh, to enter, um, eastbound and, uh, also exit, uh, eastbound, and would not, uh, create some of the problems that, uh, that currently exist in that, uh, in that area. Relative to the other points in terms of queuing, uh, there appears to be on-site sufficient area to queue the, uh, vehicles that would be in line, uh, to utilize the, uh, the Taco Bell. There is not, however, a, uh, a bypass lane, as, uh, is customarily the, uh, the case, so once a, uh, driver, as it were, customer, uh, commits to, to getting in line, they're going to, uh, pass by the, uh, the drive-through window, as opposed to, in some cases in the city with, uh, such facilities, we do have that, uh, bypass, uh, capability. Thank you.
I'll point out for City, to City Council as well, um, one of the, the city engineer in his department has spent a lot of time looking at the, uh, traffic review, traffic study that accompanied this development, because obviously all of council and the administration is sensitive to, uh, traffic on this corridor. Um, I'm, I'm happy to tell you that, uh, the review does show that, that intersection that Mr. Trab pointed out, that is currently right-in and right, I'm sorry, that is currently unrestricted, uh, right-in and left-out, um, by changing that to right-in, right-out, upgrades that level of service at that intersection from a level F to a level B, and provides virtually no degradation at Emerald Court, uh, relatively low volume, and, uh, so, uh, we actually like the overall impact on Diamond Center as a result of this. Doesn't speak to the internal movement of those vehicles, but with respect to Diamond Center, um, it may actually improve the scenario there.
Uh, is the applicant with us? Did they want to make any comments on this this evening? No? Okay. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Please state your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Brian Seelinger, um, we own the property at ninety-five twenty-eight Diamond Center, it's currently the Brew Mentor.
And I'm John Mackey, also the co-owner.
So, um, first of all, thanks for hearing our concerns on this, um, and I know that, um, that you have done, you know, s- studies and things like that, um, but we're there fifty to sixty hours a week, so we see a lot more of what's going on than what you guys actually see. Um, the right-in and right-out that they're proposing, I think is a good thing. I think that brings, uh, you know, traffic directs it into the Taco Bell. I think what it does is then it increases more traffic at the intersection of Emerald Court, because no longer can, you're gonna pull in to what's gonna be the new Nusa, uh, Subway, and also Pizza Place and the Candle Company. Um, so that traffic will now come down Diamond Center further and enter, um, on Emerald, uh, Emerald Court. They're saying that that, um, that that was a, uh, a level F, uh, level of service F on that fifty-nine-point-six second delay, uh, with the current in-and-out situation, um, but the traffic light, um, and also the trip information that they've given us, that I have from the, the, uh, the traffic study impact, and maybe I'm not understanding this, but it's saying, uh, ninety-four trips with forty-eight in and forty-six exiting on a normal weekday for AM hours, um, and mo- the majority of the traffic is, is going back to, um, back to Heasley Road. Um, so, they're saying about ninety percent of the traffic is gonna want to make a left-hand turn. That means, out of the forty-six, uh, exits during a regular AM, um, trip, ninety percent of that's gonna generate forty-one cars coming back through that parking lot, um, and then it becomes a safety issue with, the, if you saw what Ron had up earlier, um, regarding, um, the flow, actually, I've got that map here. So, if, I think, this is probably the best one. I'm not sure where I need to go with this right here. Okay. So, um, I don't know if you can see, and, let's see what that looks like. Okay, so, traffic flow coming in, um, off of Diamond Center, uh, heading eastbound, coming in, going through the drive-through, coming out, um, as long as there's no delays with food or anything, should then make a right-hand turn if they're going to be eventually heading westbound, again, on Diamond Center, come through, and then come in front of the, the existing structure. So, you're gonna be putting forty-one cars an hour in front of this existing structure, and then dropping them to this traffic light. This traffic light, so, we're gonna increase the, sorry, okay, so this traffic light, we're already gonna be increasing, okay, we're gonna be increasing the inflowing traffic, um, that's gonna need to come into this parking lot because they can no longer enter on this end of the plaza. So, we're gonna be increasing the inflow traffic, we're gonna be increasing the outflow traffic to approximately forty-one cars, uh, during a peak time, um, but that traffic light cycles about every three and a half minutes, with the exiting green light being twenty-three seconds. So, on my way out today, um, from, from our, uh, building, the exit time was twenty-three seconds, and that was at about five-thirty today, and I don't know if that changes throughout the day, or during peak hours or not, but what happens is, because Diamond Center has, uh, a, a, quite a bit of congestion on this stretch of road here, we get traffic that's stopped all the way to this traffic light. So, this is something that might not be being seen, is that it's pretty typical that we can get one left-hand turn out of that traffic light in that twenty-three-second window. So, that becomes a problem if you're gonna be dumping forty-one cars per hour, that's, that's, um, you know, we're gonna have, we only have twenty cycles per hour, and you're ha- jump, trying to get two cars out per hour during peak. I'm not saying it's like that all the time, I'm just saying that we see that on a pretty regular basis. We also have, um, something that, I'm not sure if you're aware of or not, but there's a pass-through easement on our property, so our property being right here, um, and that pass-through easement is for Steak 'n Shake. So, we have a, a significant amount of traffic that pulls in off of Diamond Center, onto Emerald, and turns left, and goes through the front of our parking lot to get to Steak 'n Shake. That was an easement that was something we had to accept, it was part of, uh, part of our, our purchase agreement, it was in the, the, the property, uh, so there was nothing we could do to, uh, alleviate that. I believe that easement was put there initially because Diamond Center used to end, and there wasn't a proper entrance for Steak 'n Shake, or Steak 'n Shake was built prior to the building that we're currently occupying. Um, so there's a significant amount of traffic that gets dumped from Steak 'n Shake, eh, to this intersection as well, so it's not only the forty-one cars that would be added to that per hour during peak time from the Taco Bell, but you're also adding, or you already have currently, the Steak 'n Shake traffic that comes back across through my parking lot and jumps at that lower end, right here. They dump from Steak 'n Shake, making a right-hand turn in order to make a left-hand turn onto, onto Diamond Center. So, there's a couple of things we're, you know, we're concerned with, we're concerned with, you know, safety, I already have a significant amount of traffic that runs in front of my store, um, but also, I don't know that we're getting a true picture of the traffic that builds up there, especially during peak hours.
So, I was just gonna address the new queue. So, if you have people that are gonna sit in queue, what that's gonna do is that all that backflow now from Steak 'n Shake will sit in front of our, um, place of business. And so now you're restricting people coming into our business, and you're restricting people getting out. So, this is gonna be a byproduct of pushing everybody down to Emerald Court.
Anyhow, um, I, I think, you know, it's mainly, you know, a traffic concern, um, with the buildup of traffic there, you know, the, the, the other side of Emerald Court, there's a lot of head traffic that comes in, so making a left-hand turn is not always easy, and in a twenty-three-second window, um, you know, it, it's very difficult, like I said, to get more than one car through there. Many times, they're in the intersection or stopping in the intersection and waiting until the traffic on Diamond Center heading westbound actually clears, um, and that blocks then Diamond Center. So, it, it's, I mean, Diamond Center is, is a pretty congested area right there, and I think that anybody who spends any amount of time down there can see that that's an issue already. I know that it's been an issue that's been brought up with City of Painesville, when that was, uh, when they tied those roads together, and then also, I believe that something was brought up with the proposed build out of the Menards, uh, that was down there, as far as widening or changing the traffic flow patterns in that area. Um, so, again, our concerns are, you know, are, you know, safety issues and traffic flow in front of our store. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wanted to speak in opposition? Did the applicant want to respond? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Alright, uh, good evening, my name is Ryan Gillespie with the GPD Group, uh, we're located at five-twenty South Main Street, Akron, Ohio. We performed the traffic impact study that, uh, initially looked at the impacts to the external roadway network as the, um, you know, site plan review went on, we started taking more of a look at the internal circulation and, um, working with some of those changes to try to address some of the concerns. Um, based on the comments that were just made, uh, I think the, the, the volume numbers that are being discussed are, are pretty accurate. Actually, I think in our report that we looked at, we found that, uh, we'd actually see probably about sixty vehicles exiting out opposite of Emerald Court in the, um, in the peak hours, I think, um, it's estimated about forty or fifty. Even said, uh, eh, you know, that magnitude is very low number, um, the, the intersection itself has the capacity to accommodate a much larger traffic volume than what it does. Uh, the level of service at that intersection is levels of, uh, B and C, which is actually pretty good, um, considering the volumes in this area, so, even though we are adding traffic to that, that inherently does not create a safety issue just by merely increasing the traffic. If that was the case, we would never develop anything because every additional traffic or vehicle added to the roadway is making it less safe, which isn't necessarily the case. Looking at the analysis of that intersection, we do think it will still operate, um, understanding that there are some concerns on Diamond Center. Uh, the one thing we would, uh, suggest looking at into, uh, based on the comments just made about the traffic stacking up and cars not being able to get out is, uh, we would be willing to work with the city on looking at the traffic signal timings there. It's my understanding that that signal is interconnected, um, as part of a larger system, um, thus the coordinated operation in those long cycle lengths. Uh, we've developed timing patterns at other locations for other cities, uh, to address this very concern where cars backing up to the intersection, when the side street gets the green, they can't go anywhere, uh, we've been able to change those offsets and adjustments so that the traffic queue moves just in time for them to get the green, so when they are able to turn out, they actually have somewhere to go. I believe we can do something similar to that at this location, if the city, um, would desire. Uh, there's other considerations to take into account there, because we still have tr- uh, traffic coming from the east, we have it coming from Emerald Court, so you're trying to balance the need of all the volumes, and unfortunately, for this location, the northbound approach here is probably the, the lowest, uh, volume generator relative to the other legs of everybody trying to get back to the west. Uh, but ultimately, I think this plan, um, you know, even though it does push traffic down to the Emerald Court intersection, overall, it creates a much safer environment, uh, for the Diamond Center roadway, uh, as I already was identified, restricting that to a right-in, right-out, as opposed to the full movement that it is currently. Um, we are pushing traffic to a certain location, but it's a location that we can handle that traffic in a much safer manner, which is, uh, in the best interest of the traveling public. So, while there is, um, you know, we understand that there are some concerns to, with the adjacent property owner, uh, we feel that this, uh, traffic pattern will work for this development and provide the, the best operation, um, for this corridor moving forward.
I'm Adam Mackey, I'm with Taco Bell Corporation, uh, I live in Carrollton, Ohio. Um, I did wanna add as well that it was discussed that traffic coming in wouldn't be able to access over here, but that this, we're gonna have a cross-access, accessing agreement with Trask, so that way, um, anyone can pull a right in here and actually access the, the strip center here from the Taco Bell lot.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, in receipt of all correspondence received pertaining to this matter, this public hearing is adjourned. New legislation, ordinance number seventeen dash O dash seventy.
In ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the city of Mentor, two thousand and six as amended, and the official zoning map by rezoning of approximately zero-point-one-eight eighth of an acre from OVO Village District Residential to OVO Village District Commercial at seventy-four sixty-one Presley Avenue.
Mr. Philippiac.
Nothing further, Trab.
Gentlemen?
Move the suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Ordinance number seventeen dash O dash seventy has been approved. Ordinance number seventeen dash O dash seventy-one.
In ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the city of Mentor, two thousand and six as amended, and the official zoning map by rezoning of one-point-nine-two acres from R-two Single Family Residential District to B-two General Business District at eight-zero-four-zero Broadmoor Road and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac?
Nothing further to add.
Gentlemen?
Move the suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Move the approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Mentor President?
Yes.
I have a comment. Um, I, I have a few questions on this, uh, this, uh, development here in this property. Um, I have, I'd like to address, uh, Mr. Crissaro's, uh, traffic questions going forward. Um, I, I don't, I, I'm not a job killer, and I'm not a, a development killer, but, uh, I, I just, I understand that, that spot, and I understand the traffic there. Um, I would, I, I don't wanna stop it from going on the ballot, but I would just like to try to get Mr. Crissaro's, uh, traffic questions addressed and, and looked at, and see if there's anything we can do about that. Um, but, uh, from there, yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance number seventeen dash O dash seventy-one has been approved. Ordinance number seventeen dash O dash seventy-three.
In ordinance authorizing the issuance of a conditional use permit to allow a drive-through facility at ninety-four ninety Diamond Center Drive in the B-two General Business District
Yes, Madam President and members of council. I would simply ask that if council is entertaining approval of this or considering the question, that we would attach this attachment that was provided by Mr. Traub as an overhead, as an exhibit, and that we would include all the conditions represented in this diagram as a condition for the approval. So, if we mark it that...
I think the way to do that would be for a council person to move to amend the ordinance to add a fourth item under section one, which will be that exhibit that the manager has identified, and if he wants to bring it forward, we'll mark it as exhibit four or as number four. And upon a motion so made and approved by the council to amend this, it'll be incorporated in it, and then you can vote on it.
Move to amend as stated by the law director.
Excuse me, Madam President. If we're looking at the conditions as provided in council's, as provided as conditions, if we're incorporating this exhibit, the conditions that were indicated, would it, would only include exhibit number three? So, all conditions represented in, I'm sorry, condition number three. So, conditions one and two would become moot if we incorporated this plan.
If anything, it's redundant, so that's why I thought I'd leave it in because it's, it does say what that plan does. They're not inconsistent with the plan, it appears, that it says Westerly Access Drive shall be reconvened to provide a split right-in, right-out. I mean, isn't that the same thing? Not the parse words, but it seemed like it was maybe redundant to that exhibit, but not inconsistent to it. I just thought we'd add the exhibit.
Fine. That's fine. Yeah.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a...
Second.
Please call the roll.
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
[laughing]
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Move to suspend as amended.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Move to approve as amended.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
I am going to move forward and approve this, but I'm going to do it with some trepidation because I was one of the two people that called this up, and some concerns have been addressed by some of the property owners in the area, and I certainly hope that there's an issue going on once this thing gets into place with that intersection, that it's addressed, hopefully with the way that the gentleman from the applicant addressed it with respect to this stop sign, the signal. Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Well, I was the councilman who called this up after closely watching it make its way through the planning commission. I think that exhibit four that we have before us is a much better plan for traffic movement on the site, so I vote yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Like Mr. Kirschner said, I'd appreciate, you know, if there is problems that the traffic timing is worked on. I hope you put a lot of attention into it, but yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes. Ordinance number seventeen dash O dash seventy-three has been approved as amended. Resolution number seventeen dash R dash one-twenty.
A resolution directing the Lake County Board of Elections to conduct an election November seventh, two thousand and seventeen, on the question of whether or not ordinance seventeen O seventy shall be effective so as to authorize the zoning change of lands provided therein and declaring an emergency.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Resolution number seventeen dash R dash one-twenty has been adopted. Resolution number seventeen dash R dash one-twenty-one.
A resolution directing the Lake County Board of Elections to conduct an election November seventh, two thousand and seventeen, on the question of whether or not ordinance number seventeen O seventy-one shall be effective so as to authorize the zoning change of lands provided therein and declaring an emergency.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Resolution number seventeen dash R dash one-twenty-one has been adopted. Second readings, we have none. Third and readings, we have none. We have no persons before council this evening? No.
I'll vote to adjourn.
Second.
Good.
[inaudible].